Yep.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Town and Situate Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, August 18th, 6:30, 2:00 PM. I would like to call this meeting to order and acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
We'll blame Ms. Curran, second in Mr. Vignani. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So on 5-0 in acceptance. This meeting is in response, is being held via remote participation due to COVID-19 in response to Governor Baker's declaration of public health emergency dated March 12th, 2020. And the meeting shall be held remotely until further notice. This meeting is recorded by Situate Community Television, can be viewed live on cable television, Channel 9, and we post it on our website tomorrow. Participation by the public is available by Audio Conference Bridge. If you wish to participate for the meeting, the audio conference call is in, can be accessed via these numbers. You can also go online and see them on today's agenda, but they are 425-436-6308, 425-436-6338, 425-436-6300. The access code is 817651, pound sign, and you will be instructed during the moderated question and answer periods when you can participate. Before we get started, I just wanted to let the board know that we will have one agenda change. We will be taking out of order the Humorock Fire Station discussion before we talk about the DPW contracts. So that will happen at 7:05, in theory. And I have just two other quick comments before we go to the Town Administrator's Report. The first is that Town Hall has received a number of calls, people concerned about the security and the accessibility of voting and balloting. And Monday on our update, our town clerk came in and went through all of the protocols she's put in place. But we, I really want to just iterate that, that our systems are very secure and that you can come and put your ballots in the door after hours, and it's a secure box, a secure box. Nobody can access it except our town clerks. And there'll be more about that coming up, but I really want to commend the town clerk and her staff for really stepping up to, in these challenging times. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we have all received a number of calls about the ongoing McCushnet Pond berm replenishment. And we have directed a bunch of the, there've been a lot of consistent questions about that, and we have directed those questions to the consulting engineer, and we expect to have a very quick turnaround in responses so that we can give people the right and accurate information. So stay tuned for that. With those two little updates, I will turn it over to Jim Bedrow for his Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. As always, we'll start off with COVID. I just got the report for today. No cases today, so we've had no cases since. The report of last Monday, we had a full week of no cases, which is good. Statewide, the infection rate was down about 1.4%. Unfortunately, the governor has released some new guidelines for athletics. The coaches at the high school and all the youth coaches are looking at them. They do not bode well for some fall sports. One of the mandatory modifications for a moderate or high-risk sport is to eliminate deliberate contact. All deliberate, close contact must be eliminated. Deliberate, close contact includes but not limited to collisions, body checking, tackling, blocking, and racing, riding, and packs. That does not bode well for football. It doesn't bode well for lacrosse. Soccer might be thrown in there, so I know the coaches are looking at that, but those guidelines are not conducive to some of our fall sports. So we'll see what ends up happening there. The reservoir is currently 41.4% full. The rain we've received over the last couple of days might help your grass a little bit. It's not sufficient enough to help the reservoir at all. We have turned well 17A back on. That is going back into the reservoir. That's about 300,000 gallons a day, so that will be helpful. One of the byproducts of that, though, is that well has a lot of manganese in it. So we have done the testing on the manganese removal process at the treatment plant to take that manganese out of the water, which we think is causing some of the brown water around town. Those test results have gone to DEP. Once DEP gives us the approval, we have it in place so we can turn that back on. Hopefully, that'll remove a lot of the brown water that we're seeing around town. We are still seeing a lot of water usage. Our water usage for last week averaged 1.820 million gallons per day. That was down from 1.878 the previous week. We think that change is mainly just the cloudy days where people weren't using as much water. So we do need you to conserve. The state is in a drought. All the towns around us have severe restrictions on almost their marijuana. Water can only between 5:00 PM and 9:00 AM. No automatic sprinklers, no hoses, no nothing. But we need some rain. So please, we need to conserve your water and get that number down even further. Good news is, we're down to about four or five kayaks, boats, whatever, left on Museum Beach.
Great.
The DPW is going to coordinate with conservation to remove those. So if one of those is yours, you should probably get it off there by tomorrow morning, because at some point over the next couple of days, the DPW will remove those. So there were over 70 boats there at one point, and I think we're down to four or five at this point. And from what I've been told, the boats are the left. We don't think anybody's going to come to get them, but for yours, you better go get them, because they're going to get shocked. We're not going to keep them anywhere for you. Amy Walkie did a good job. She coordinated that, put all the signs up, got the notices out. So congratulations to Amy on taking care of that. Two quick updates on construction. Bailey's Crossway and Gilson Road, those culverts have been installed. The guardrails were going up today. Paving is scheduled for tomorrow, so those should be open by the end of the week as scheduled.
That's great.
The gas company will need to come back to Gilson Road, because they haven't finished their work. We haven't been able to get them to come back, but whatever they do to damage the road, they're going to have to fix when they come back. So there will be some more work on Gilson sometime in the next couple of weeks, but we don't know when the gas company's going to come back. And again, the athletic fields, they are still on track to be completed by September 1st, substantial completion. Obviously, the grass is going to have to be replanted, but the softball field is being done now. They're painting some lines on the other fields for fall sports, and that should be pretty much wrapped up by September 1st. I have been informed, they haven't got the official notification yet, but I have been informed that the owner of August Construction is going to make a $5,000 donation for the fields. Hasn't told us what it's going to be for yet.
From who?
From the owner of August Construction, the construction company that's doing the project.
Oh, August, okay.
And the board will have to accept that for, he might put it towards, they want to put a new school board in or something else. But I have been informed by the project manager that they're going to make a $5,000 donation to the town for some aspect of the field. So thanks to them, they've done really a superb job out there, considering COVID and everything else we've had to go through. Lastly, and I think the board will be happy with this, we have filled the position of the Manager of Social Services previously held by Laura Minier.
Great, great.
Erica Saurus will be starting on Monday. She has a master's degree and is a licensed independent clinical social worker, which is actually a higher level of licensing than we had required in our ad. We had about 35 applicants for the position. Bob and Drew Shealy, our health agent, went through those, conducted the first round of interviews. And then the second round of interviews, Bob and Drew Shealy, along with our fax director Anne Marie Galvin, and Lieutenant O'Mane De O'Shea from the police department, conducted the second round of interviews. And Erica was the unanimous choice of that committee. I checked their references. They were excellent. I looked at her resume and things today. We've made an offer. She's accepted, so she'll be starting Monday. So no, that was a priority of the board.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to tell you that we've got that filled. We'll have to move some money at the fall time meeting. It won't be substantial, but I know the board wanted that filled. So now, one of the things we'll talk about is whether we want to move forward, maybe a little bit early with Brad's position, but that's something we'll talk about later. But that position is full. I think she's an excellent hire. I think she's going to do a fantastic job. She got really, really highly recommended, so we're excited. No one's going to replace Laura Minier, but if she can do even a part of what Laura does, we're going to be very happy with what she's done. So that's all I have for tonight, and we'll have her say hi to the board at some point in the future after she starts.
That's great news. Thank you so much, Jim. Any questions for the Town Administrator? Yep?
No.
All right. We'll just move along then. We are, our first order of business is, is Lyle Nyberg on the line?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, great. How are you? So our first order of business is a proclamation concerning the Women's Suffrage Centennial, which is today. Lyle, would you like to just inform everyone why, why this is important to our community? I mean, it's obviously important to all of us, but in particular to Situate?
Yeah. It was 100 years ago today that America adopted the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and gave women the vote. That was dramatic step forward in democracy. It basically doubled the number of eligible voters in the country. And Situate has a really deep connection with the movement that led to that great achievement. It turns out that there's, there was a significant number of nationally prominent suffragists who spent summers here in Situate. And I've just discovered this, and I'm writing about it in a book that should be out in about a week called Summer Suffragists. And more information is available on my website at lylenyberg.com. I go into great detail there, but it's the result of a year of research, including visits to the town archives and the basement of the building you're now in, and a lot of other research. Let's see, the most famous person who spent summers in Situate was Inez Haynes Irwin. She lived on Second Cliff. She later became a famous author of children's books. But she, in, just out of college at Radcliffe College in Cambridge, she and a colleague formed the College Equal Suffrage League in 1900. And then in 1921, she issued a history of the National Women's Party, which was the more militant branch of the suffrage movement. They're the ones that promoted picketing of the White House, which really was the first time that the White, there was pickets in front of the White House. And they promoted the picketing of President Wilson when he visited Boston, about 1919 or so. So she was the most famous, and she, she was a summer resident here since about 1900, when her family, the Haynes family, came here to spend summers. But she later wound up being a permanent resident. It turns out that her brother Walter Haynes married a local girl, an O'Neill, the daughter of a Irish Mossir. And Walter and his wife ran the Idle Hour Theater, the first movie theater in town. And then he later became a state representative representing Situate. And he actually wound up voting in favor of the amendment as it came out to the state for ratification. So we have some very direct connections with the suffrage movement here. Another person I'd like to mention is Judith Smith, who spent summers actually in the lighthouse from about 1870s to 1890s. They had connections where they were able to stay in the abandoned lighthouse at the entrance to Situate Harbor. And this was a surprise to, to me and to a lot of people. But I was able to confirm that with her diaries. And she, they later built a cottage nearby, which is still there. It's about six houses away from the lighthouse. And she, her involvement in the suffrage movement began about 1870s and lasted for 50 years, until she was about 100 years old. She was giving speeches when she was in her 90s, and she wound up being able to vote for president in 1920. So that was quite an achievement, and she was really an underappreciated suffrage leader, but she was president of a lot of the Massachusetts-based suffrage organizations. So those are two really important people that spent summers here. There's a lot more, as I said, available on my website and in my upcoming book.
Lyle, that is...
So I think it's really relevant to today. There's so many stories in the news today about the possible suppression of votes, questions about access to voting in terms of the pandemic of the COVID-19, and in terms of mailing in ballots. So it's really, it was quite an achievement then, but it's not just history. It's very important to us today. So I wanted to leave that, leave the message for everybody who's listening and who watches this, that it's very important to exercise the right to vote, which women got the right 100 years ago, but it's important to exercise that right, too. So I'd encourage everybody to vote.
Great.
I'd be happy to, I would recommend that the proclamation that I proposed is posted on the town website.
Well, Lyle, we...
And I'd be happy to read it, or I, actually, I'd rather defer to you, because I think your sound system's probably better, but I'd be happy to read it, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Lyle, thank you so much. I'm looking so forward to reading your book. It's, it's very fascinating to hear about the history. We will, we would be honored to, to read into the record, the proclamation, but I just wanted to see if any of the board members had any questions or comments before we ask our clerk to do that. Anyone like to add anything? Uh, Ms. Curran?
I'd just like to say thank you, Nyle. I'm always amazed at the amount of historic folks that we have in Situate that are uncovered in projects like this. So thank you for all your research, and it's a great, it's a great celebration. So thank you.
Mr. Goodrich?
Again, I would like to say thank you as well. And I think I was reading that Judith Windsor-Smith, she was, she may have been born in Marshfield, but I think she lived right here, some of her best days here in Situate. So I look forward to reading more about her history and everything coming up. So, so thank you for what you've done.
All right. I'll ask the town clerk, unless you have any other comments. I'd like you to read the proclamation.
No, I just say it's very timely, and I appreciate the work that Lyle has done on this, and I look forward to reading the book as well. I have a proclamation in honor of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas the bold, courageous, and powerful women who fought for the right to vote and the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution on August 18th, 1920, deserves special celebration by the Town of Situate, Massachusetts, especially on the 100th anniversary of its ratification in 2020. And whereas Massachusetts was the eighth state to ratify the 19th Amendment on June 25th, 1919, and whereas Massachusetts holds a special place in women's suffrage, suffrage history, as thousands of Massachusetts women advocated for the right to vote in the streets, in the newspapers, in the state Capitol, and throughout the great state, and as Massachusetts was the home of many suffrage leaders, national suffrage organization, and the National Suffragist Paper, Women's Journal. And whereas Situate, Massachusetts, holds special place in women's suffrage history, as many nationally recognized suffragists spent summers in Situate during the suffrage movement, and as summer resident Inez Haynes Irwin, who became a year-round resident, co-founded the College Equal Suffrage League and wrote the history of the National Women's Party, and whereas the fact that today, women are active in local, state, and national governments and are running for office in unprecedented numbers reminds us that we all follow in the footstep of these resolute American suffragists. And whereas the 19th Amendment to the Constitution has played an important role in advancing the rights of all women and improving our democracy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Situate, Massachusetts hereby recommends that residents and civic institutions celebrate the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, providing for women's suffrage, honor the role of the ratification in promoting the core values of our democracy embodied in the United States Constitution, learn about and commemorate the efforts of the women's suffrage movement and the role of women in our democracy, learn about Situate's role in the women's suffrage movement, and continue to strengthen democratic participation and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment, adopted by order of the Board of Selectmen, Town of Situate, Massachusetts, this 18th day of August, 2020. Signed this 18th day of August, the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen, Karen Canfield Chair, Anthony V. Vignani Vice Chair, Karen Connolly Clerk, Marcy Curran Member, Andrew B. Goodrich Member, Kathleen A. Gardner Town Clerk.
Thank you so much, Clerk. That's exciting. I'll be looking forward to posting that somewhere so everyone can read it and see it. Thank you, Mr. Nyberg. We're ready to go on to our next agenda item, which is 655 donation of Betterment Fund for Old Mouth Humorock. Mary K. Kurtz, are you on the line?
I am on the line.
Oh, this is working. Great. Would you just give an overview of, of the background on this for the benefit of the board and the public?
Certainly. So approximately back in 2012, 35 homeowners, I'm one of them, we formed a Betterment to take care of the dirt roads in our neighborhood. And that Betterment was to be a five-year Betterment, but it was filed with the town under 20 years. So although the monies have all been collected, the funds are getting very low. We only have about $2,000 left in the account, but plenty of years left on the Betterment. So the neighborhood has gotten together, and we've all agreed to, we'd all like to contribute another $500 each, which would be a total donation of $17,500 into the Humorock Old Mouth Betterment account. So we're hoping that that's not going to be an issue.
Okay, we did receive correspondence about this issue. To rec, and then, and correct me if I'm wrong, but your, your association Betterment Group, all of the roads out there are private roads that you maintain, that we maintain the funds in order for DPW to assist you in any work that needs to be done out there? Is that accurate?
Yeah, this was strictly for like the grading of the road, you know, and we have to add material as needed naturally as it wears away. But we use approved contractors with the town, and we want to continue to be able to pay those contractors. We call as need when the road really starts to get bad and it needs to be addressed, and then the contractor will submit his bill to the Town of Situate, and then you folks pay that contractor out of our Betterment account.
Okay. But all these roads are private roads, so you dictate whether or not they need work, correct?
We discuss it.
We, we determine that, correct.
Okay. Does my board, does the board have any questions, Ms. Connolly?
I do. I have a question, Nancy, I think, for you or Kim. Is there a reason why we would actually hold the funds? Is there any reason why they wouldn't have a homeowners' Association that would manage these funds?
I'm so sorry. I hate to, I'm, I'm on a cell phone. I don't have a landline, and I'm not hearing you very well.
Okay, let me speak into the mic. Is that better? Can you hear me?
Little bit, yes.
The question is to the financial director, not you, so.
Yeah, I just, I want to know why we would hold it in a revolving fund that the town would have, rather than the homeowners have a homeowners' association and leave us kind of out of it.
Well, the reason why is because the Betterment account is still open. If it had been filed for only five years, it would be up by now. But something happened when it was filed, and the town filed it as a 20-year Betterment, probably like you would do for maybe a much more major type of Betterment for sewers or drainage or something like that. So it's still open. So I'm sure there's homeowners that are still collecting funds each year until that 20 years runs out.
Would the director like to expand? Our financial director?
An answer to your question. In October 2011, there was a special town meeting article establishing a new general bylaw, section 30180, for the purpose of making repairs of private ways, which established a private way revolving fund, and announced into, it entered that fund that these Betterments that Mrs. Kurtz is speaking about are deposited and from where the expenses are made. So it was a town meeting action.
So, to follow up on that, if these neighbors contribute $17,000, is that $17,000 earmarked for that neighborhood, or does it go into, is it a general revolving fund?
The only thing that goes in and out of this is that, that move from that original Betterment.
So this is just for this particular neighborhood?
This is all that's in there right now.
So there's no other neighborhoods in this?
Yeah, this is, yeah. That Betterment, that, like, it's only for our roads that are part of the 35 homeowners, correct? It's not for anything else.
Any, any private way can do this, and if they did, then Nancy would keep them in two different buckets in the same account.
So there'd be different buckets for different neighborhoods or roads, whatever?
Yes.
And I guess it's easier for the, for the neighbors to do this rather than form a homeowners' association?
This was a solution that came up with in 2011 with Mr. Man, with the DPW director.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
No. I think there may be somebody on the line. Is that, we...
Can I go to Q and A?
I'd like to open it to Q and A, please. Hi.
Q and A session has started.
If you could please, if you're here to speak about the Old Mouth Road donation, could you please give your name and address?
Is there anyone in the queue?
It does not appear that anyone's in the queue. We did receive correspondence that was related to work that was done out there. This particular action is to simply accept the funds to put into the account, not to dis, not to approve or disapprove any kind of work out there. So if there's no further questions, I...
I'm sorry, just one second.
Q and A session is over.
Okay. Did all of the homeowners participate?
Yes.
Every one of the people that are...
35.
All three, okay, great.
If there are no further questions, I'll take a motion. Oops. Anyone?
Move to accept the donation of $17,500 for the Betterment Fund of Old Mouth Road Humorock.
Moved by Ms. Vignani.
Humorock, correct.
Yep, second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Connolly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you for calling in, Ms. Kurtz.
Great, thank you. I was just wondering, so is it okay if I just collect the checks from each neighbor made out to the Town of Situate and then give it to you as like one deposit?
Yes. Our finance director is nodding yes. Good. Okay.
Can you make sure she heard that?
Oh, sorry.
Are you still there, ma'am?
I am still here, yes.
Did you, did you hear, did you hear that?
I couldn't hear that last line. I'm sorry.
That is acceptable.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
To collect it and bring it in, all right?
All right.
No penny rolls.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. We are, as I said, we are going to bump our Chief Murphy from the Fire Department up to our next item to discuss the Humorock Fire Station Design Services, Coastal Engineering Corp. Chief, I guess you just stay there. Can you get him, sir? Okay.
I have a brief summary. Just a little bit ago, that's where.
Thanks, Dave. Oh, good. Thank you, sir. What's up? Just slide it over. No. We don't need an accident right now.
Thank you. So we're here tonight to look at this contract proposed from Coastal Engineering for about $8,4500. And what that is going to do is, Coastal's been on engineering to date, designing a lot of the site work, the foundations, and revise some things, and tighten things up for the last bid, which came in high. So this contract with that is to propose to, basically, we put up the last bid for a prefabricated building for the living quarters. This money here, the majority of it is going to do to design this building. We put out a stick build, we have to have a formal plan designed for that, for that to be sent out. We say that maybe some value there in going stick build. Next time I put the bid up, we'd like to give option to stick build, prefab, or pre-engineered, and put the whole project up together. We separated last time, two different buildings, a prefabricated building. We built a factory with a different building wage. We brought some cost savings there, and then we had one bid, came in high. So it's a summary here of what we've been doing, the site plan, we've got the EDRS, it's an appeals board, board of buildings, the standards, the regulations, the standards of the state. The new, the new plan, new code says that how that bid would have to be six feet in here. It's impossible to do that, but that's what the code says. It's a specialized building in the flood zone. So we had to go to the Board of Appeals and try to say, we want to mound it up two feet, make as resilient as we can, but still need our slope standards. feet, make it resilient if we can, but still need our slope standards up front, which is five percent, according to building code. So we did, up here, we brought down the main, the main contact, Nema, who makes all the flood decisions. He came down on site with us, Neil Duggan, Bob Bolden and I, and he realized the small law we had when we were dealing with, that he was in support of it. We did a Zoom meeting, he spoke, and the university voted to support us to be able to do the building as, as designed for the normal flood, the normal flood regulations being we could do the bay two feet and do the regular building at five feet to raise that up. So, well, that was successful day, we moved on in June to finalize all of our plans and bid documents. And, and down in Bold, you'll see down below is where the two bids came in. Right now, it's a little frustrating at the site plan. The site work, which includes one tight tank, one stormwater drain, some raising and mounting of the area, and a two-bay garage, came in at eighty-seven nine. The building itself, I know, costs about a hundred and fifty, obviously you could pay, that doesn't include the slab of the foundation, and sprinklers, the electrical, the gas, and something like that, but that, that is astronomical. So, yeah, and then the, the building, the prefabricated building, the price is in that same range for prefabricated buildings, with the building in town, they built two of them, they asked me to give a price on the site, they gave the floor plan, they gave about a hundred and fifty thousand. That came in one bid, paid back, and forfeit, and the building building wage included in that. So they, they came really high, so what we're looking to do is try to send this out as one package, give me option to stick build, give me option to prefabricated or pre-engineered building, yeah, I think we're going to get a lot more bids in. And right now, I think the, we thought it was going, but right now it seems like the commercial building has died to turn the other way. I got some C and S from the other day with the P bill, that this area, Boston area, commercial construction, and, and big residential projects are down thirty percent from last year. So I don't know if that brings any opportunities or better pricing, but our plan is to try to put this back out to bid, it's late September, October, have the bids back, and then try to go to town meeting, and then follow through, it was approved by you, and try, this is the number, this is what we need to build this project, and try to move forward. So right now, the contract we're trying to, gets signed tonight, and approved, is the coastal engineering for eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars, to basically design this building, that is a stick build building, and some of this, some of this is obviously well.
Okay, so this, this proposal, obviously this building has been well vetted, it needs to be done, now we have a problem with just getting the actual construction done. Does the board have questions for John, for chief? Anyone?
Well, I'm not trying to throw a wrench into the works here, but how far is the nearest fire station in Marshfield from Hummerock?
The old station is possibly between five and six minutes away. Typically, when they do mutual aid, they send their headquarters, which start by approving the air grounds.
Yeah.
It's about a seven-minute timeline to get down there.
I, I guess, you know, this is turning out to be a much more expensive proposition, as you know, than we started out with, and I guess my just question is, have we thought about trying to work with Marshfield on doing mutual aid? Or would it be politically a bad thing for us to do as a town board to say to the people in Hummerock, you're not going to have your own fire station? So I, I know it's probably controversial, but I just figure, before we keep heading down the road, maybe we need to think about it.
Yeah, I don't think Marshfield, I think that was proposed a long time ago, Eric Agnew. I don't think that was, was, was really received well by Marshfield, I don't think we received well by Hummerock residents.
Yeah.
We just built the building up to stay up to see if it's worth more money, but the biggest reason was that they have the, the better response times.
Right.
They really run second angles, which we now have the best response time to sell share, we have two full-time crews in the angles crew, so it's proven to be a faster than this promise. And I think down in Hummerock, it's a unique situation.
Yeah.
It takes us twelve days, we need to get down this, and he's having two personnel.
Oh, yeah. I'm not in any way suggesting that we should try to deal with Hummerock from Situate, that's just not acceptable, but I just didn't know if there was an opportunity, if there was a close enough fire station. But, you know, I understand the politics and the-
Marshfield has the same staffing we do, and they're quite busy.
Yeah.
They're running, they're running two or sometimes three angles themselves.
Yeah.
So I don't think that would be an option. Initially, this dotted out as a hopeful renovation. Two thousand eighteen, the January second storm, January fourth was my second storm, we had water, just about touching the flubles. So instead of taking the two fifty, putting it into here, and this building being washed away, so we're going to reevaluate, try to raise the building up, and then give this later for many years to come. So that's what we came up with, this plan, obviously costs more money. I'm shocked at what it does cost, but it is what it is, and it's, it's been a little frustrating to try to get these numbers down. So I think the best we can do now is put it out as one big program, have all options, stick build, pre-engineered, and prefabricated, put it out there to see, and get more bidders in here, and hopefully by the time this goes up to bid, possibly in October, maybe it's tide's turned and the commercial real estate building, we're going to get an aggressive price.
Thank you. Ms. Curran?
Chief, can you, I, I feel like we're in this situation, because we have tried to Band-Aid a problem three or four years ago, and maybe if we had approached it properly from the beginning, we wouldn't be at such a high cost, but what is this eighty-four thousand dollars exactly for? Is it to design living and the base, the whole kit and caboodle? I, I'm a little confused at exactly what we're going to get out of this. And I am reading, you know, some of the bid responses, but I just want to understand exactly what this engineering firm's going to do.
So the base, we pretty much, we want to stay with the physical building we'd like, it's a prefabricated, pre-engineered building, similar to the, the micro-burying, Greek ship, the ship wagon, the building's very efficient, it's, you know, the wind loads, it's a local, you don't know about it, but it fits our whole person. We don't really want a steel building, because of that environment down there, the steel's going to rust over time, it's going to be, you know, carbonation, it's just, this building here is a heavy wood frame building. So what he is designed to do is, he is going to take the majority of that money is to design this living quarter, which is basically a two-bedroom prefabricated, two-bedroom building, twenty-four by forty-eight, one level. So it does seem high, but I think about twelve of that thousand, twelve thousand of that dollars, with some of the money, work he'd already done in the first page, which he'd paid, just under fifty thousand dollars for, so he felt he'd done above beyond what he was supposed to do, so I'd say about probably, say seventy thousand dollars of that is to basically design that, that next building, that living quarters, so we put it up to bid. And some of the bid documents going with that, so from basically designing construction to the day we put it up to bid, that's what that, that funding is for.
So say that again, so the first, yeah, so the first design, design the base.
So the base of design, that's done.
That's the money that was spent in the initial phase.
Yeah, so that's done, that's done.
So the design's done, period.
Design for the base is done, but the design for the-
To put them together.
Prefabricated building, if you put a prefabricated building, we gave the, the design of the building, we gave the floor plan, and when you do a prefab, typically they take that in, they do all the codes, they run the wiring, they do all that when they, when you do a pre-engineered building. That came in high, forfeit, so maybe we should go stick build after what happened at the concession stand, they came over at like six hundred, they came somewhere in the little fours after, maybe there's some cost savings in putting it out in, in all different ways, but to do that, we have to have that building designed, have a set of plans, basically, that we have from, from the structural support, to the electricals, to the sprinklers, to the plumbing, everything has to be designed, spec, and that's true, what the majority of the money is for.
Mr. Goodrich?
So, number, I mean, I, I love the idea of going with the prefab itself. The issue is, it's eighty-five thousand, so we're hoping that the savings is going to be at least eighty-five thousand to make up. I mean, how, I mean, how confident are we that it's, I mean, I'm not-
And I've been thinking more and more about that today, I was like, that's, that's, it's a perfect point, and that's, we gotta, we gotta save that, and there's also a cost of a long duration of construction, that somebody's going to have to go with that. So, I'm, I, you know, I think the cost would be, it's low for the building, but the associated cost of this contract, and the other side of a longer duration construction project may not, you know, be cost effective. But right now, we're trying to move forward from this, this is a plan at the table. I, I agree a hundred percent, that, that, that cost, high engineering is cost a high, you know. Standard number of areas, but it is, is, that's what they, they proposed.
I mean, so I think, I mean, where are you, for us just to go with the four fifty, and I mean, we're talking a year of construction, I mean, there's, there's also the time length as well.
So the prefabricated building, the four fifty, I mean, it's built in the indoor, it's still there, you have the foundation built, that includes the foundation too. So the foundation for that, we could estimate anywhere from like, I want to say close to ninety thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's big in the flood zone, there's pipelines, but they thought of construction, I mean, the concrete canals, was sort of a foundation underneath, would be the best for that, to be resilient, occasionally got that eighteen ninety-eight storm here, you know, for all that building here. It's, and that's, like I said, that's, so the building itself is probably pretty good, yeah, pretty good, if you love to build that building, and you save the cost there. And that's the question, that's the money question, to spend that money to, to try to offset that saving.
So the rebid's going to be for the both pieces, though, not just the prefab?
Yeah, no matter what, we have to put everything out at once.
Yeah.
So, because savings that we didn't have to pay, we could buy directly from that pre-engineered company, and not pay the building wage and try and get a good price. Obviously, we did, we only had one bid, we came in at the end, and I'm not sure, it's because there's a lot of supplies right now in town, there's a lot of supply issues out there, so I'm not sure if somebody wanted to meet that timeline with this, maybe we gave a little more timeline, come out again, I don't know, but we were all sort of shocked, and we, we expected that to be closer to three, three fifty, came in four fifty, and even more shocked that the apparat's bay and the site work.
What was, Nancy, what was the amount that was approved at town meeting? Did, did we do?
Five appropriations projects.
Nine twenty-four.
So, the original one was two hundred and fifty thousand for the apparat's bay, and then fifty thousand for renovations to the residents, and then we followed that up with another two hundred and seventy-five thousand, another ninety-eight being seventy-five, and then, and then to two hundred and sixty thousand. Part of the problem is it's all in pieces.
Right.
So it's either for the apparat's bay or for the resident quarters, so we can't go with either being what they-
Can't add them all together.
We don't have enough in either place. So if we move forward with something, and if we move forward, go tonight, and if we move forward with something in the fall, one of the things would be to combine all of these appropriations into one pot.
That's what I was just going to say. Yeah, right. And that would be part of the warrant vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we've been chasing the projects.
Right, okay. To Ms. Curran's point, that brings it all together into one pot.
Initially, to Mark's point, you know, we've been doing a lot of work, Bob Bolden, me myself, we did, we've been doing a lot of work to try to design this, it's two bases, we're first looking at is two prefabricated buildings. Now, Rocket Science, you know, obviously there's the site work involved, in Vertex is an OPM, they check, they have checks and balances on engineers, architects, they know a decent amount about each one, but they're not professionals in each one. So with their consultation, when they put the documents out, we didn't hire an architect engineer mission, but it's basically the prefab building, they designed it, they designed the building, you give us backs how big you want it, they design the whole thing. And so we went that route initially, and, but now with the, with this contract design, it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for coastal, there's probably another twenty for the OPM, and then, then the cost to, to own the site project, so. I, I, I agree, that, that if you look at this, this cost to sign a stick build building, is it going to get offset the savings on the building that's a small, but that's, that's what we got.
You have more questions?
No, I mean, there's no doubt that the station needs to be done, repaired and done, it's just the whole process has been a little clunky.
You know, and-
So I think if we can combine the funding in the fall, it'll make it a little bit easier. Right now, it just seems like it's a little disjointed.
So, well, you know, we have the professionals on this last one, you know, and we were, we have, we worked with the owner, we actually had a bid that was in last year, that, right now, it's pretty good. So, you know, when I first got this project, I'll tell you about it, I did a contract, but I did the best I could by myself to hire Cross Engineering to go out and get bids and recontractors, and we could buy a whole building, we tried to save a ton of money and go out there, but we had a bid a year ago, and then there was something to pay on the soil conditions, which ended up being not now.
Got some lessons learned there. Does, are there any question, other questions from the board on this?
Just one more.
Yep.
So Nancy, if you add up all of the appropriations over the past few years into what, I think it's, is it one point three million, one point, about over a little, over a million? Is that going to be enough, or are we going to have to appropriate more money?
That's what we're going to find out, yeah.
That's the reason to put it up to bid before town meeting, that's right.
And we will know that before town meeting, so we'll know what we're asking for.
The part of this cost of eighty-four five is to get a cost estimator, so a cost estimator that come out there, and it wasn't done last time, because they wanted to save some money, you know, when it was tight, so this time, town engineer wants a cost estimator, give us a cost estimator before we put us up to bid, we want to know, we want to go to capital form, and then, and then when town meeting comes, we have these numbers.
But we won't have, we, we have free cash, we have cash somewhere, right?
We don't have free cash right now, we both have free cash now.
Okay. So no override for this?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay.
I think I heard a beep, I'd like to open it up to question and answer, so.
Q and A session has started.
Hi, if you'd like to comment, comment on the Hummerock Station Four project, please give your name and address. Anyone there? Nope, I guess they didn't hear anybody. All right, we'll close the Q and A. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Q and A session is over.
Moved to award a contract to Coastal Engineering Company for professional architectural engineering services, proposed for the town of Situate Fire Station Number Four at Ford River Street in the amount of eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Moved by Ms. Curran, or second, second by Mr. Goodrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. All right, thank you, chief. Enjoy your evening, thank you for coming in early.
Have a good night.
All right, we will go back to our regularly scheduled agenda, which is to discuss and vote DPW contracts. I saw Sean, yep, he's out in the hallway. Our town engineer, Sean McCarthy, is making his way in.
I'm not up here, I'm kind of trading with Sean on some of these contracts.
Is what, I'm sorry, say again?
I'm kind of trading with Sean on some of these contracts.
Oh, okay, well, I'll just, I'll tee it up and you guys can fight over them, how about that?
Can we take them out of order?
You know what? You could do them out of order, right? I think Nancy will go first. Is there a reason to, or just go down the line?
Snow plowing is last on the list, and we brought Mike in.
Well, I think we should go first with the snow plowing.
I think you should stay till eleven.
You know what, we're going to move number eight to the end of the meeting.
I'll stay until eleven.
Does the board have any objection to having Mr. Breen go first on snow plowing?
Nope.
Fine, then, we'll talk about snow plowing and standing rates for private contractors with our, in trouble with Mr. Breen. Would you like-
We made a request to up our, up our rates slightly to keep up with the neighboring towns. We're having trouble keeping our contractors, and we're losing a few of them to neighboring towns because their prices are just a few dollars more than ours. I don't know if you have the analysis of the different towns or not, but I have, I have, you know, and I'm trying to keep our rates competitive with the other town towns who are not moving. Right now, we're, we're missing four roof contractors that have, that are down, or just decided not to. Just trying to keep our rates competitive.
Okay. On page forty-eight of our backup, we do have the analysis comparing Situate to Norwell, Cohasset and Marshfield, and based on that analysis, you provided a recommended hourly rate for Situate in the coming year. And looking at that, yeah, yeah, it demonstrates that we are, in most cases, below what our competitive communities are paying. And so the rate is anywhere from eighty to a hundred and thirty dollars an hour, depending on the type of equipment. Are there any questions about this proposal, Laura?
No, I think-
No, I think it's, I mean, obviously, we haven't raised rates since 2015, five years later with the costs, and, you know, we need to be competitive. I did have one question for Nancy, though. Can these, you know, can this percentage of increase be absorbed in the budget that we just approved?
It can, as long as we don't have a horrible winter. If we have a horrible winter, there's nothing we can do other than to address it, and that's why we need to have the contractors available to us. Our staff here, there's no one who's going to turn back over $200,000. So the private contractors are our largest expense. We normally do not expend the full amount of our overtime, just because we don't have enough staff. If we have them here during the day, they can be plowing all night long as well.
I just have one question for Mike, too, sorry. Mike, have we automated yet, or used any program to assign contractors? You know, I remember a couple of years ago, you were still doing a lot of the assigning of the roads very manually. Have we put that on software yet? We're still doing it pretty manual? I'm looking at Sean, okay.
Yeah, we've got them color-coded and.
Yeah.
For all the, all of my rest, including the.
Okay. Ms. Vignani?
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, so, Mike, so there's what, like 36 different routes or so? And how many, we don't, we try not to use the contractors.
Well, we don't need the contractors anymore for solving it all, we can do that all in-house now. And we have about 22 town employees that, you know, and a lot of them are tied up with the schools and the public buildings and, and all those areas. So that ties up a lot of our public grounds guys. And then the remaining guys are all on groups, they all have my groups, they all have Sandy groups, and we keep them busy. Last year, we did have a problem with a few contractors not coming, not coming back to us or going to another town, which we absorbed that because it was such a light winter, that some of the guys would take over and work longer hours a day. You know, possible, some of these guys would go with a couple of their groups, and they go down to another group, and they'll be on the road for, you know, the, for the 20 hours. And just covering a lot of the contractors that would be in, we really felt.
And so about a third of it, and when we're at full force, about a third of it is contractors? Nancy, do you know what the rate increase is about? You know, what's, is it, because we're going from the lowest to the highest on most of these.
Um, it depends on the severity of the storm. If we have a lot of piles of just regular, I'd say like, you know, six-inch kind of events, if there's going to be a larger impact to us, because we're increasing the four-wheel drive, the smaller pile trucks. But we're, we are competitive right now in the heavier equipment, so if we have blockbuster storms, our rates are changing. So if we're hauling out loaders or handling dump trucks, it's the same rate. So it depends on the kind of storm. If we get a whole bunch of little storms, we have to bring in private contractors, it is going to impact us negatively. If it's just waters and big storms, they're basically at the same rate.
Okay, thanks.
Right, and go ahead, Mr. Goodrich?
So, I usually like, how's it going? I usually like when Situate is first in something. I don't know if I'm thrilled to see that we're going to be the highest. Is there any way to go in between some of these, or if we just matched Cohasset on most of them, or even we're in between, just a little bit higher than Cohasset, but not as much as Norwell? I mean, we're going to lose people. My question, we're at 14.5% unemployment in Massachusetts right now. So I just can't, can't imagine that it's going to be as difficult as previous years to maybe to find some folks. I just don't know if we can find the middle ground that we're not number one, but we're better than Cohasset. Would that be, do you think you'd still be able to find folks to do it, or?
Right now, we have a problem, I don't know whether this is about solving the problem, or it's just a problem all around. And there's not that many people following it from before. Even with the bad economy, I'm not having people knocking on the doors to fly with, and we're trying to find anybody. It's been tough trying to get contractors.
The state's still outpays us, don't they, Mike? The state still outpays us?
Yeah.
We've lost a lot of contractors to the state. Out of two ways, so they pay better, but when they run out of money, you don't get paid anymore, or we keep paying people. But it's been a struggle to get contractors pretty much everywhere the last couple of years.
We also lost contractors when we required them to have higher insurance limits. We found that we've had a couple of contractors that were offering the minimum required insurance to just drive a vehicle. And not, we require at least $100,000 for prior injury per accident, and $300,000 per person, and $300,000 per accident, and even that's a couple on the low side. But we lost people when we did that.
Do we know how that compares to other communities? Do they require that?
It was my requirement, I believe, wasn't it?
Um, the buyer requires even more, recommends, they don't require, they recommend, they require a million-dollar coverage. So if you're in your larger commercial, private contractors, they can do it. Your small guys, it was not pleasant when we did this.
All right. And these are the first time the rates have moved since 2015, as Morrison? Okay.
And of course, everyone that I asked for rates, said, let us know what your rates are.
Yeah, of course. Are there any further questions about this? Do we have anyone waiting in the queue that you can tell?
There are people here, I'll.
All right, we'll open it to Q and A.
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to discuss the snow plowing and sanding rates for private contractors, please give your name and address, and we'll recognize you. No one has done, I'll close Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to set the rates in private contractors for snow plowing and sanding services to the following. Can I just say as printed, or do I have to read them, Jim?
You say as printed, or as in the selectmen's packet?
As printed in the selectmen's packet. There's about 15 or 20 different rates.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Connolly, is there any further discussion? I'll just note that those rates, as I mentioned before, start at $80 an hour, which of course includes all the equipment that the driver needs, and go up to $130 for a full loader, a front, a four-wheel-drive loader and a backhoe. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich is no, it's four to one, the motion passes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Breen. Would you like to stick around for the other contracts? All right, we'll move on to the Eastern Salt contract, one-year extension. Who's got that?
I got that.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. So this is the annual time of year when we come forward with the salt contract. Our existing salt contract is going to expire next month. We do have salt on order, believe it or not, it should be coming into the barn soon.
All right, that makes me sad.
I know what you said. DPW director Kevin Chapretti reached out to Eastern Salt, and they were willing to hold their rate at 48.45. Our existing contract that you voted last year, contract 19-HW-44, allowed for extensions. The line size didn't change. So that would be to request to do a one-year extension at the existing rate of 48.45, to be the third year at that rate.
And as I recall, a few years back, when they added the molasses, or that new whiz-bang thing that our salt used, went down? Yeah. Anyone have any questions about salt? I guess we'll open to question and answers if people are in queue, you never know.
Q and A session has started.
Hi, if you have any questions or comments about the Eastern Salt contract, please give your name and address. Okay, I'll close that.
Q and A session is over.
Someone like to make a motion?
Move that the board of selectmen award a one-year extension of contract 19-HW-44 to purchase road salt from Eastern Salt Company of Lowell, Mass. For $48.45 per ton.
Moved by Ms. Kern, is there a second? Second by Mr. Vignani, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes, five zero. Next contract is Dennis K. Burke for gasoline and diesel.
He's willing to ask you to award a contract to a state contract bidder for gasoline and diesel. I mean, two competitively bid state contracts for our area, this Dennis K. Burke, who's had the contract for several years now. Last year, the town expended $109,897 on diesel and $125,034 on gasoline, which is low for us. When the pandemic hit, the prices bottomed down, which was very helpful to our budget.
Question?
Thank you.
The prior year, we spent $169,000 on diesel and $152,000 on gasoline, and we are seeing the prices beginning to creep back up this year. So this would be a request to award a contract to Dennis K. Burke for purchasing gasoline and high-sulfur diesel consistent with state contract ENE-47 and ENE-49.
Are there any questions about this contract? I open to Q and A, please.
Q and A session has started.
Hello, if you have any questions about the gasoline and diesel state contract, please state your name and address. Hearing none, I will close question and answers.
Q and A session is over.
Would someone like to make a motion? Do we have a motion?
I can make one up, I don't think this one is.
Okay, make one up, yes.
I don't see it in the, anywhere.
You can give it to Tony.
Tony.
Move to award a contract for the purchase of gasoline pursuant to a state contract ENE-48, and ultra-low sulfur diesel pursuant to state contract ENE-47 to Dennis K. Burke of 284 Eastern Ave, Chelsea, Mass. For the period of August 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2021, for a total sum not to exceed $400,000.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, is there a second by Mr. Goodrich? Any other discussion? Seeing none, did we open to Q and A? We did. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, five zero. Next contract is GZAG Geo-Environmental for Design Services for Third Cliff. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, as we've been working through the revetment records with Third Cliff, and our FEMA consultant, we've done an unprecedented combination of storm events. Working with FEMA and FEMA have combined four different federal disaster disasters into one project for repairs. In doing that, the project became a whole. So instead of spot repairs that would have been made by each storm, because of the several storm events, it was becoming difficult to say, these three rocks came from this storm, and these three came from another. As we moved through the preliminary design process and met with the reviewing agencies at the EOC, it became very clear that the permitting was going to be expanded from what we typically do to make spot repairs on the revets. As we started to work through the different agencies and the different permits and requirements, FEMA frowned upon us, giving a change order to our current consultant to perform that work. So we prepared an RFP, we actually had about 50 companies interested in receiving the package. And we did receive four proposals from local engineering firms with good reputations. We all performed a peer review of their submittals, and then met following, and prices ranged from $421,000 to perform this additional environmental work, including assessments and alternative designs. They wanted us to look at alternatives to changes in the revetment that may perform better in the future, which was an additional task as well. All the way up to $986,000 to perform the same work. The low bidder did happen to be the qualified engineering firm that we all selected as well. We wish to award the contract to GZA Environmental to perform the additional permitting services for Third Cliff.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Other questions from the board?
My only question is this, is this funding, is the funding for this also part of the FEMA reimbursement? So 75% would be reimbursed?
Yes, I apologize.
We're already, 25% is already in, we just approved.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to confirm, Ms. Connolly?
Just for my information, exactly where is this project? If you're on Third Cliff, where, what are you looking at?
All the way from Dickens Row, all the way to the, just shy of the Spit.
Oh, that's a long way.
Yeah.
Any ideas to what the final cost might be? I mean, is it in the $4 million, or $8 million, or?
I think the total estimated was at 12.
Okay.
Done in two separate contracts.
So this is a huge project. This is big, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Can we open to Q and A?
I'm sorry, it's a two-step process, we keep forgetting.
Q and A session has started.
Hi, if you'd like to speak about the final revetment and repair design for Third Cliff, please give your name or address, and address. No one's responding, we'll close Q and A. Would someone like to make a motion?
Q and A session is over.
Move that the board of selectmen award the contract for Third Cliff engineering design to GZA Geo-Environmental of Amesbury, Massachusetts, for $421,168.
Moved by Mr. Goodrich, second by Ms. Kern, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five zero. The next contract is TruX Catch Basin Cleaning. Ms. Holt is on her feet. She's excited about this one.
Catch basins really make my day this time of day. So in April, the town administrator awarded a contract, a competitively bid contract to TruX Corporation, contract 20-HW-11, for an amount that will extend $35,000 with two one-year optional extensions. We were doing really well until about a week ago, when a bill came in for $34,000 for cleaning over 2,000 catch basins. So we'd only spent $8,000 to date the fourth act of the contract. The current bill for 2,509 catch basins would put us up over to $43,000. The town administrator was willing to extend to its limit to $49,500 of the contract until we could bring it back before you. The contract is only a few months old, it seems to change us to extend, increase the limit of the contract at the unit price of $13.94 per catch basin, in case we have a poor winter, or we have any type of hurricane where there is overwash. Because it's during those events that people tend to forget that we have to send higher, these companies are got these companies on contract so they can go out and empty the catch basins, and swallow the sand and debris that cuts forward. So we do need to have it in place. So if they're willing to hold their price, we will be able to go forward with extensions. If not, we would just rebid it after that.
All right, so we're amending the rates of the existing contract and extending, or just amending the rates?
Um, just amending the limit. Right now, it has a limit not to exceed $35,000, now it's $49,500. We do like the, you could choose to have it not to exceed, say, $100,000. And that way, if they spend $40,000, $30,000 a year, that gets you three years. It's up to you, or you can just tie it to one and give them another $10,000 to $20,000 leeway if we have to come back, or if they ask you to extend it, we will not again.
All right. Any questions?
How many catch basins there are.
Well, they need to be cleaned, that's for darn sure. Questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll open up to Q and A. Everybody needs their basins cleaned.
Q and A session has started.
If you have any questions about catch basin cleaning, please give your name and address. No one's there, so we will move on to, would someone like to make a motion?
Q and A session is over.
Move to approve the existing contract number 20-HW-11 with TruX Corporation for Catch Basin Cleaning at a rate of $13.94 per basin, with in-town disposal for expenses in excess of $49,500 through its expiration date of April 30th, 2021, or subsequent extension through April 30th, 2023. The out-of-town disposal rate is $26,000. The out-of-town disposal rate is $26.80 per basin.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, seconded by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries five zero. Next contract is log chipper purchase, Cleaves Company.
It's the spring town meeting this year. Public grounds had a request to replace a 20-plus-year-old chipper.
Mm-hmm.
And they priced it this spring, they found a chipper that met their needs with the improved safety features, for $55,000, or actually, the chipper is 56, $55,000 was awarded at the spring annual town meeting. There's a slight deficit that if they decide not to trade the existing chipper in, they will use $1,371 from their operating budget to close the gap. This is a public grounds piece of equipment, might get out of here.
There's still life in the old chipper?
I don't know, I can't speak to it.
Any other questions from the board?
Is it actually called the Intimidator Brush Bandit? It's the Intimidator?
That's worth the extra $13.
What chipper can be intimidating?
The Intimidator Chipper.
Any other questions about our chipper? Shall we open to question and answer?
Q and A session has started.
If you'd like to comment or have a question about the log chipper, please give your name and address.
Brush Bandit.
No one's there, we will close question and answer. Would someone like to make a motion?
Q and A session is over.
Move to award a contract to Cleaves Company Incorporated in the amount of $56,371.75 for the purchase of a log chipper.
Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Vignani, because I saw his hand. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So motion carries five zero. Next contract is the Suez Medicleer Chemicals Contract.
I believe Mr. Branton is waiting on the call.
Oh, okay. Mr. Branton, are you all on the line? Branton?
I am, how is my volume?
Good, I can hear you. Would you like to explain what this contract is for, sir?
Yep, so this is a contract to renew with Suez for a chemical called Metclear. It's a chemical that we use to treat and remove copper from our waste stream. EPA gives us a very strict copper limit, and this is the only chemical product that we found that is both non-toxic and able to remove the copper. We've performed multiple chemical trials over the past year and have still not found an alternative product.
Are there questions from the board about this contract? Okay. All right, I'll open up the Q and A.
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to comment on the copper chemical removal contract, please give your name and address. I will close question and answer, no one's in the queue.
Q and A session is over.
Someone like to make a motion?
Move to award a contract to Suez W2TS USA Inc. for Metclear for an amount, annual cost of $33,000, with two one-year extension options.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, is our second. Second by Mr. Vignani. No further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Branton.
I'm sorry, who's seconded that?
Uh, Mr. Vignani.
Thank you.
The next contract is Dankris Builders for Septage Upgrades.
Should also be Will, I believe.
Oh, Will, I'm sorry. I didn't let you go yet. Are you still there, Mr. Branton?
Yep, still here, this is a big contract for sewer, this is our septic receiving upgrade. I just want to verify, this is my turn to speak?
It is.
Say that again?
Yes, this is turn to speak, yes.
It is your turn.
Yep, this is a, this is a large contract project, it's essentially the culmination of three major projects for the sewer division. The primary purpose is the septic receiving upgrade, which is an upgrade designed to remove heavy copper-laden materials from the septic waste brought to the facility. It'll also remove other rags and debris, preventing damage to downstream equipment. It'll include features like a flow meter station, which has been requested by local haulers. It'll also include a control station for local grinders and pumps, which are located in the septic receiving facility, and all of this will be integrated with our SCADA system. The other major component of this project is an add alternate for the construction of what is essentially a debris pad or bay, and we wound up increasing the size of this bay, such that there will be, now be two bays. One will be for the purpose of de-watering and keeping up with the maintenance of the sludge, which is collected from the bottom of our tanks periodically for cleaning. And then the other bay will be used for catching up on our inflow and infiltration project. Again, a similar type of activity where we send out our jet truck to the pipes in the streets and bring up debris and material for cleaning the pipe, prior to sending robots in for exploring and looking for leaks. Due to requirements for de-watering, we need to, you know, bring this debris to a certain water level, and we need to construct these bays in order to do that.
Okay, so the funding, about 40%, I guess, is already available funds, the rest will be borrowed at a future request of the board for interfund borrowing, is that correct? Nancy's nodding her head. Other questions from the board? No?
I just, a question, Will, where does the copper come from? Did you hear that, Will?
The copper will come primarily, primarily from the pipes in the home. Most home plumbing is made with copper pipes, they're still a common material found. They'll also be copper present in cleaning chemicals and other chemical byproducts, septic tanks, and, you know, they act as, essentially as a trap for these heavier materials like metals. And then when the haulers bring that to our facility, it's incredibly concentrated when it enters our facility. When we went through our intensive copper study with Ty &amp; Bond, and I will note Ty &amp; Bond is the engineering firm overseeing this project, we did identify the copper waste stream as being the most concentrated waste stream for copper flows.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
An education.
Are there any other questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll open it up to Q and A to the public.
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to make a comment about the septic upgrades proposed, please give your name and address. No one's in the queues, so I will close Q and A and?
Q and A session is over.
Ask for a motion.
Move to award a contract to Dankris Builders in the amount of $1,237,200 for septic receiving upgrades with add alternates for station debris pads.
Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carry the motion, five zero.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you, Will, now you. That's, that concludes our discussion of contracts. Well, DPW contracts. Now we will move on to our 755, discussion vote of Widows Walk Contract. Let me just get here a second. Oh, Seth, oh, Nancy. Nancy has risen again, thank you.
I'm not sitting down, I need to, yeah, there's something. So what we have before you are two contracts, we're going to ask the board only to take action on one, and I'll explain about the second one as we go forward. The designer that the town procured last year in June of 2019 was S3 Designs of Braintree, who did a conceptual design for the Widows Walk Clubhouse improvements. That project was approved by the capital planning committee, the advisory committee, and yourselves. It brought the board town meeting in June, and it was approved, funding at $1,817,000. The Widows Walk Improvement Committee is capping with the work that S3 has done. S3 would like to continue as the architect. Our original RFS did have multiple phases, so we have the curatory. So at this time, we asked S3 to provide us a proposal, which we have in front of you, is for $181,860 to finish the final design and all of the big documents and construction oversight of the construction of the improvements to the Widows Walk facility, clubhouse facility, excuse me. We had estimated in the capital plan that was provided to you back in December that this cost, based on a $1.8 million project, would be about $186,000. So we are in the parameters of the estimate that we expected going forward. There is one cost that is not included, which is borings, they had, after they sent this to me, they said, you know, will you do the borings, or do you want us to do them? You go ahead and do those borings. So that will come up later on, it shouldn't be, I would think, a couple thousand dollars, probably here as a modification or a change where he hasn't been able to get the prices from the end.
Are the borings for the parking lot, or for, because this is exclusive of the?
There are three sections that they're adding, so the?
For the foundation.
And then the front, and then the puddings for the additional decking, and then in the back where they're going to buff out and put in the freezer and the refrigerator. So they'll be outside, all of those would have to be borrows. So it's not a lot of borrows that would have to happen.
So the approved funds, though, don't, don't have, don't touch the parking lot improvement costs at all?
No, my understanding from the Widows Walk committee chair is that they are simultaneously moving forward with community preservation for a project for the parking lot. I don't know how far it is going along. Or they need to perform their application, but that is my understanding.
Does the board have questions about this contract? Everyone shaking their heads?
Will, just, yeah, one question. So the, there's an engineering consultant contract, is that included in the S4? There is a whole list of work excluded, is this normal to have that many things, such as code consulting, fire protection design, HVAC design in the kitchen area? There's quite a long list of work excluded. Did we purposely exclude that work, or?
No, you normally have a list of things that other, you know, kind of provide your unit price, or looking for the additional, so they'll do their best to estimate what they're going to need to do, but if something more happens, then you're going to, you know, situation of having to change order, you decide to move forward with it.
So, for example, LEED certification and documentation is not included, and I know in past new buildings that we've done, we've gone for that LEED certification.
We haven't always, because sometimes it's more expensive to get the LEED certification than?
I know it's more expensive, yeah, depending on which level you get it at, your silver, your gold, or whatever, but the library did? They decided not to, okay.
Because the cost spread wasn't worth it.
Okay.
And for the most part, it's just a small portion of this is additions to the building, it's more just the renovation of the interior.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, they built it to those standards, they did not apply for it because it costs money?
Any other questions about this contract? Then I will open it to the public.
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to comment on the Widows Walk contract, please give your name and No one there? All righty.
Q and A session is over.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to award a contract for Designer Services for Widows Walk Clubhouse Renovation Project to S3 Design Incorporated in the amount of $181,860.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, five one. Our next, are we discussing the OPM service?
We're discussing one, we're not going to discuss it, if that is all right.
Okay, that's perfect.
The OPM, we did put out an RFS for an OPM because of the project, any project, public construction project over $1.5 million is required to have an OPM. The bids were due back on August 6th, a committee of four, the chairman of the Widows Walk Improvement Committee, myself, the DPW director, and the golf director, P. Kelly, evaluated the nine responses we received and ranked them, and we gave our top three picks to the town administrator, who has not had an opportunity yet to review those, and negotiated price of the OPM, and we can move over the contract at this meeting, but hopefully at the next meeting have it before you.
All right, understood. Any questions for Mr. Bedrow or Ms. Holt?
He just had to take a vacation, Jim.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of methods are. All right, then we will table the OPM contract until next meeting. Our next topic is vote and discuss the Town of Situate Council on Aging Litigation Settlement Agreement with Mr. Bedrow.
So as the boards aware, when the Council on Aging project was approved, there was a suit filed by some of the neighbors. Their main concern really was about the access to and from the Council on Aging, how that will impact their ability to get in and out of their property. As, as the lawsuit was filed, we met with them and their attorneys on a couple of different occasions to go over some of the things that we could do. We discussed it with the board. So basically, the settlement agreement is two parts. One is that the driveway from the Council on Aging will become a right turn only coming out, so you'll be heading east on First Parish, so taking that traffic that would go left and cause extra problems with people coming over the hill and setting that away. The other one is, when you look at the neighbor's property, there's the fence where the Council on Aging is, and the stone wall, that is actually all town property, so that the board would give them a license agreement to use that width up to about 89 feet back to the front of their house. If they wanted to make changes and do things to improve their ability to get in and out of their driveway, they would have to come back to us to get approval for whatever they did. So if you wanted to stay in their driveway, would have to actually put in a wall, they would put in a wall, would have to have that reviewed by an engineer to make sure it was everything. And then we'll go to town meeting and have that made into an easement, which is just a little safer thing than a license agreement. So it's what we talked about. The only difference, I think, when we originally talked about this, the curbing was going to be asphalt, and they asked if it could be three-inch slope granite curbing. We ran that by the police chief and fire chief and the DPW, it's not a problem for them, they can still get in and out and over that, which was our concern, that an ambulance had to go left, was going to go left. So they said, no, that's not a problem, those are in a lot of places over town, they can make it over a three-inch curb. So that was the only change from what we had discussed, going from asphalt to granite.
Does the board have questions about this agreement?
Is there going to be a, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Chair. Madam? Is there going to be a divider in there, in that space, the driveway, right next?
Once you go in?
Yeah.
I don't believe there, like, it's just striped going in.
Okay, I don't know why, I think I saw that somewhere, so that's good. And what's it, I guess I don't understand the difference, giving them a license to do this compared to just giving them an easement, is there?
An easement, the license agreement is voted by the Board of Selectmen. You are constrained in how long you can make that license for, and it's revocable by the Board of Selectmen, so you can give them a license today and take it away next week. An easement is longer lasting, it's voted by town meeting for a period of time, it gets recorded with the deed that it exists, so it's a much more permanent thing, it's still revocable, but it takes a lot more work to revoke it.
Okay, thank you for explaining that difference.
All right, any further questions for Mr. Bedrow?
So this, the planning board has actually already scheduled a hearing on the right turn only, they have to bless it also, but I'm not foreseeing any problems, we discussed it with the planning board also.
So, Jim, just in giving in this as a lawsuit?
So once everything's done, and we've, the planning board's voted it, we've voted, we have to come back, subsequent meeting, we'll vote the license agreement, once everything's voted, then the lawsuit will be revoked.
Will it be binding until, it won't be binding until the planning board agrees?
Until we've done everything that we're supposed to do, then the lawsuit will still remain filed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Like to open it up to question and answers?
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to comment on the Council on Aging Litigation Settlement Agreement? If you would like to comment on the Council on Aging Litigation settlement agreement, please give your name and address. Has anyone queued up?
No, the local board has put in a queue and a queue.
Okay.
Someone just did. We have someone now.
Oh, hi, would you please give your name and address? We're discussing the Council on Aging Litigation settlement. Is anyone on the line? If you are, we cannot hear you. You need to do the access code 817-651-pound sign.
Did I hit star six?
Oh, do they need to do pound six?
Hit star six.
If you prompt them, they come in.
Pardon me?
Tell them what to do.
Okay.
Oh, it prompts them, okay. All right, last call for online, is anyone there?
Hello?
I'm going to, I'll answer next question and.
Okay. Hi, if you'd like to comment on the Council on Aging Litigation settlement, please state your name and address.
Gordon Price, 48 Manlot Road.
Hello, Dr. Price? Go ahead, Dr. Price.
Hello?
Gordon, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, you are live.
Hi, Gordon Price, 48 Manlot Road.
Is anyone there?
Gordon Price, 48 Manlot Road.
Okay, go ahead, Gordon.
Does he have his TV on?
Okay, I was just curious as to what the.
Do you like to comment on the Council on Aging?
Tell him to turn his TV off.
Gordon, you should, you can turn your TV off.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you wonderfully. You can mute your TV, might be good.
Okay, I just do it in my TV. What were the expenses, legal expenses involved in this lawsuit? And where were those monies going to be coming from?
Uh, they were minimal, Gordon. I don't have the bills in front of me. They were minimal and it comes out of the legal bills, out of the town's legal fund.
All right, but they were minimal. Good. I just want to thank you, Jim, and the board for seeing this little hiccup through. And again, just grateful for all you've done to see the project go forward. It's exciting to drive by and see the progress that's being made. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Gordon.
That's it.
All right, is there anyone else waiting in line? All right, we will close our question and answer period.
Q and A session is over.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to accept the council, move to accept the Council on Aging Litigation license agreement and settlement agreement.
Moved by Mr. Vignani.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Connolly. Further discussion, seeing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The motion carries five, zero. Jim, thank you for all your work on that. That was, that was a lot of good negotiating. Um, our next item is to discuss, speaking of, discuss and vote the town administrator's contract. Um, as the board is aware, Mr. Vignani and I met with our town administrator, whose contract had a clause that allowed us to extend for another two and a half years. Is that correct? Yeah, we've adjusted it to fiscal year as opposed to calendar year, which is why it's two and a half and not a normal three.
The fall was two and a half because it was on a calendar year. This new one would be three on a fiscal year.
On a fiscal year, exactly. Um, and the terms are included in your backup for your review. Um, we've discussed this in the past. Does anyone have any further comments or questions about said contract? Ms. Connolly?
No, just like to say, Jim, I'm happy to approve this contract. You've done a great job and you certainly walked into a lot of situations that I think you weren't really expecting right away. And you've done a great job leading the team, addressing water, sewer, and obviously all the storms that you walked into too. So I look forward to the next three years, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, I would just repeat that. I, uh, the contract was up, we made adjustments to it that made it just more feasible in terms of running the town. And I think you're doing a great job and I'm looking forward to a continued three-year service. Thanks, Jim.
Well, and I guess it's safe to say, no one heard of COVID-19. And, you know, I think the town has done really well, you especially, and the team that you work with. And I just want to thank you and I'm glad you're signing up for another, who knows what's next?
No more COVID.
No more COVID.
Not to this again.
Yeah, I'm excited to approve this contract and to, and to keep working with you. And it's just been, it's just been a real pleasure and I appreciate it, so thank you.
The only thing wrong with this contract is it's not for five. So thank you for your service and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All together.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Holt, as pointed out, we've neglected question and answer period, so I will open it up to the public for any comments. You ready?
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to comment on the town administrator's employment contract, please give your name and address. All right, nobody jumped in. Now, I.
Q and A session is over.
And a motion by Ms. Curran and a second by?
No, we haven't read it yet.
You haven't read it?
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Oh, that's right, you were. It's in front of you, go ahead, Karen. Have to go back.
Move to approve the employment contract for the town administrator for the period of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Moved by Ms. Connolly, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Vignani. Further discussion, seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you to the board, thank you for your support and for the next several years. Hopefully without COVID.
It will be without COVID. We're going to be optimistic.
There we go. The next item on our agenda is to discuss vote ratification of restaurant extension of premises for Salt Society and Reva. That's again, Mr. Bedrow.
So Salt Society, we'd originally approved them having seats across the driveway entrance at Malice Realty. They did that for a weekend. She asked if we would provide a police detail. I said, I don't, I don't think I can justify a police detail and get reimbursed for that. So what she has asked for, and I approved, is instead of being across at Malice, she's moved further down in front of the building next door. We did ask her just to check what the building's on. I haven't heard back, but it is a public sidewalk, so I approved that extension. Then instead of being at Malice, she's just further down the sidewalk.
She sent an email this afternoon.
Said she had the.
Does the board have any questions?
So that's Salt Society, Reva. Out in front, they had several tables with two chairs. They want to make those a four-seat tables right out in front of the building. Kevin Cafferty went down last week and measured to make sure that we still have enough room for handicap accessibility going by. There is still handicap accessibility with there. People can still get by with those four tables, four seats. So I'd approve that change also.
We fully support, you know, one of them did this, the extension. We just make sure, I've just, I've heard from some folks that after this, some of these tables or chairs may not, may not be cleaned up as well after and that they're not really put away, so they're kind of losing some access Monday morning. Like, wait, now we can't get by. May not even be their fault, maybe they left it out and someone else moved it, but still, just kind of making sure that.
I actually had the same thought this morning, driving by, you know, all the tables were just not covered, not packed up. I think it's a risk for them.
They got all the restaurants you're talking about.
Well, it's this one.
Another one too, they had that.
It's Salt Society, you know, all of those. So I just think they might need some advice. I mean, I worry about their equipment. I was just noticing, so I think we should mention that to them. I have another question, Madam Chair. I also was approached this weekend about the enforcement of social distancing within some of the restaurants. How often or is Drew going down? Or on the weekends, do we have spot checkers, anything to? Does that have some specific concerns?
He doesn't have a route. He lives down in that area, so he wanders through and kind of looks. But otherwise, it's, you know, it's an honest system. If someone calls and files a complaint, he'll go in. But he's not making formal checks for those areas now. But under the new regulations, police, DPW, and actually a state task force can come out and do inspections.
I think we should put some sort of rotation just to, you know, because I think the notion that we're not looking unless someone calls us and complains isn't really the proactive approach that a lot of concerned citizens would like us to take. They would like to know that somebody's checking on the, the social distancing. So I don't know if we can figure out some kind of rotation between.
We can have, we can have them get out and take a check. Like I say, he lives right up the street, he's down there all the time.
It's really on the weekends, I think, is the issue.
Yeah, he'll shoot over, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Jim, does Salt Society, did they just add tables? Or did they move the tables they had down further?
The tables are, Malice moved further down the sidewalk.
So it's the same number of tables?
It'd be the same number of tables, yeah.
And I was actually at table three in front of Reva's on Saturday night. And I was, both Anne and I were impressed with, with the social distancing. All the tables at Hibernia were distanced, people wearing masks. There's people walking down the street and really not crowding anything. So I thought, I thought the citizens were doing a great job, you know, maintaining that and again, wearing masks, so it's great, it's busy, it's vibrant, it's, it's, you know, helping out some of those businesses. So I think it's been a great, great decision.
Jim did mention he's going to go down and do a little survey of the restaurants just to see, you know, if the times and the, and the conditions are working for them, you know, and sort of have the preliminary conversation of what happens when the weather turns less favorable. So thank you, Jim, for being proactive on that. Yep.
I love that idea, just to make sure that some of the other businesses that, next door, like the other retail shops, if they're, that they're going to be okay with this too. I mean, we are cutting, is it helping, is it hurting? I just, I don't want to be kind of playing favorites.
The chamber did a survey of some of those things and there are some businesses that are, believe they're being adversely impacted by the closure. So that's one of the things I'm going to talk to the restaurants about, is there something else we can do that would allow Front Street to be open, but still be helpful to you? Reva has some outside seats already. Hibernian's out behind, really to be the galley. And maybe there's something we can do to help the galley where they might not have as many seats when they're out in the street, but we can give them some extra seating all the time. Sort of balance out in terms of how much seating they have. And try to work something out that would allow us to open Front Street back up to traffic while still having outside seating for the restaurant. So we're going to talk to the different restaurants and see whether there's anything we could do that might help us do both.
I think to Andrew's point, you know, it's not just the restaurants we're trying to help down there, it's all the businesses. So if there's, if the chamber can come up with some ideas where the retail stores can open and do a whole, you know, First Friday type event every weekend, it'd be great.
We've had conversations with the retail stores, you know, if you want to put some stuff outside, as long as you're not blocking the sidewalk and people can get by, knock yourself out. We're not going to allow other vendors down there or anything, but if you want to do some outside sidewalk sales, be our guests, we're, we're fine with that.
Have we told them that proactively?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we've said that from, from day one.
Yep. Well, do we send them a letter? Like, how do we tell them they don't all watch our, our meetings?
Through the chamber.
So, yeah, the chamber and Situate Loves Local, they've sent ambassadors twice down to talk to people and to present information, so, and then Jim will be down there again.
Yes, yeah, I think one of the issues is that a lot of the little retail shops don't really want a staff up until eight o'clock at night. So it's, it would be a change for them. But I would suggest to them that maybe they don't open until 12:00. Outside of CVS, I mean, the little, like, out of the blue, et cetera.
They don't have to delay, they can put their stuff out to whatever their closing time is.
Well, that's what, yeah, but what I'm saying is, but I think a lot of them, the littler shops close at like six o'clock because they're little businesses and people have to go home to kids and everything. So it might, they might have to rethink their hours of operation, so.
I think the other factor is a lot of them have, are limited staff because they're highly run by a threat, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, so the message is always the same, is whatever the businesses need from us, just bring us a proposal and we'll, we'll figure it out. I don't think that message has changed at all, so.
And it's, it's not just restaurant-driven, as Karen was saying. Be creative, come, come to us with any idea and we'll, we'll listen to it, see if it's feasible.
Any feedback on the fashion show?
Fashion show was a great success. I think they're planning another one if they can, because it really did draw attention to that, that business, so that was good. But one thing that's really in the, in the, that the ambassadors went out last week, and one of the things that they're additionally finding is that especially the yoga studios and the workout places and all of that, they may be open partially, people are not coming back. So, you know, if you've got a favorite, favorite place and you can buy a gift card, that now's the time to start thinking about that, because we would love for them to be there when we're all ready to go back. All right, we're, we're a little off topic and I would like to see if there are any more questions about the ratifying the temporary license from the board. And then I'll open it up to questions and answers to the public.
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to make a comment about the Salt Society or Reva's request, please give us your name and number. There's no one in the queue. We will close question and answer. Would someone like to make a motion?
Q and A session is over.
I move the board of selectmen ratify the temporary license issued by the town administrator to the Salt Society and Reva to serve liquor under a temporary extension of premises and outdoor seating license in accordance with COVID-19 Order Number 35 and consistent with the process of approving such requests established by the board of selectmen.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Further comment? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries five, zero. Our next item is to have a discussion vote about the formation of an Equity and Justice Committee. And I want to just start by thanking Ms. Curran for taking the lead on behalf of the board to flesh out this idea. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Canfield, and I just lost my place here. I'm going to take this off, since I'm socially distanced.
And we have flexi lock.
Yes, we do. So everyone has a copy of the charge. I did go out and looked at several different charges out there, not only from municipalities, but also from cities and different organizations across the country. And really did find, you know, after I shared this with you two weeks ago, that it is pretty much in line with what is out there with regards to creating a committee for us to really establish an evaluation process for our policies and procedures. There are a couple of things in here, though, that I do want to pass by, Jim, because I know, Jim, you're on vacation, so I want to make sure. Let me just, why don't I read it out loud? Is that okay? So everyone. And I, and I do, I had a, some additional conversation with the Stride Group and they're an organization that has grown significantly since the whole Black Lives Matter instance. And they've got quite a following, over 100 folks now involved. So obviously, it's a very important topic to a lot of residents, including all of us up here in, in town. So I would propose, after I read this, that we move one of, let me read it and then I'll tell you what I'm talking about, so sorry. Okay, so how it reads is, the establishment, proposal is for the establishment of an advisory committee to the board of selectmen on equity and justice for all, whose charges to, one, to review town policies, procedures, and budgets for the purpose of advancing equity and justice for all, with a focus on eradicating from the Town of Situate oppression, racism, injustice, and violence against all people. Two, to report to the board of selectmen on the results of its work at least one time per calendar quarter. And three, to make recommendations based on the results of such work for the consideration of the board of selectmen within 12 months from the date of appointment of a chair of the committee. And the proposed membership, as it is written right now, and Jim, this is where I want to make sure you have a copy of this too, is up to 11 members to be a. is up to 11 members to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, including one of whom shall be a member of the Cituit Black Lives Matter Organization, one of whom shall be a member of the Cituit Interfaith Clergy, one of whom shall be the Cituit Human Resources Director, one of whom shall be a member, a representative of the town of Cituit staff, one of whom shall be a member of the Board of Selectmen, one of whom shall be a member of our Public Safety Departments, either Police or Fire. And then I would suggest adding, and one of whom would be a member of the Cituit Stride Organization, and leave the other four citizens from the Cituit community at large. And I added staff because in my experience, and my, my company has taken, you know, quite a lead. And just watching how important it is to engage our employees at my company, I think it's important to engage our staff when we're reviewing policies like this as well because they may, they will have or might have a different perspective. But I know we always are concerned about time and dedication and whatnot. It would obviously be on a volunteer basis, I would imagine. So I'm just curious, Jim, if you foresee any issues with the two town employee positions that we're recommending.
Well, your Cituit Human Resource would be the HR Director because that's the only.
I'm sorry, what?
The Cituit Human Resources would be the HR Director because that's the only human resources.
Exactly. And I, I think if we're looking at policies and procedures, we, he needs to be a, he's a critical member. So you're okay with that one?
Yeah, I mean, if Bob wants to do it, then yeah, I mean, I think we can do it.
Okay. I mean, if we need to put the appropriate title so it's clear, I mean, that's fine. We can edit that. And then what about staff representation?
I mean, that, that's pretty broad. It could be from anywhere. I don't know if you want to include that as the school personnel, Town Hall personnel, DPW personnel. I'm sure there'll be some people interested. It's just how we pick them, I guess.
Well, I think that's going to be a challenge for a lot. Yeah, for any committee as well as with the five, you know, four at-large members. You're going to get a very diverse, large group that probably is going to submit applications. So we do have to think about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we put it out to the staff saying, you know, this is somebody you volunteer for in your own time if you're interested.
Right.
Send something, you know, over to Bob. We'll put something together for the board. I mean, if the Human Resource Director is going to be on it, then would you want someone from Town Hall or someone from someplace else? Obviously, Public Safety, they have their own slot. So wouldn't necessarily be anybody from Public Safety. And I guess whether you want to open it up to the school department.
Well, they said they didn't want to be a part of this because they have their own committee, right?
Well, they, I think those are two separate things. They, they're doing their own internal analysis. I wouldn't, I wouldn't dismiss that they might not want to participate, but I wouldn't be surprised if they weren't at large. I mean, I personally think it would be awesome if they cross.
I think the school committee would like to have someone on this based on our conversations with their chair. I think the school committee would like to have a member on this.
Okay, let's add that then. I mean, it was my understanding when Mr. Long was at the meeting that he made it clear that he wanted, they were doing their own evaluation and that we would share information between the two committees. But I don't have a problem with it if they're going to participate. Right. Now, that's, I, I think, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it, but I think the schools, I, I don't want this to get muddied with our charges looking at school policies because it shouldn't be.
That's what they are.
That should be the school committee and the department. That's exactly why they wanted to keep it separate because the, I think it will be more effective keeping town policies and procedures evaluated with one group and school with the other. And we can add, I mean, what do you guys think?
Well, they can apply. They're an employee.
Yeah, what, should we, should the language be up to 11 members appointed by the Board of Selectmen that may include? It gives us a little flexibility in.
Yeah, I was going to say if you couldn't get somebody, like if no one applies from Black Lives Matters, what does it, go back to a at-large position?
Yeah, that may, yes.
Yeah, so I think up to 11 members, which may include, may include, or some language like that, and very clearly will invite these people. But we'll also invite the public to, to apply.
I'm going to say that I certainly see the Human Resources Director being part of this because he or she, whoever that person is, knows what our situation is in terms of hiring and numbers, et cetera. I'm just going to throw this out there. I think it could be very difficult for a member, for a person who works in Town Hall to be on this committee because it's going to be delicate. And it's going to be potentially opening up some things that I think it might be difficult for a Town Hall employee to be on this committee. I'm not saying they shouldn't, but I, I, I just, I think it's a, it'd be difficult.
Well, it's optional. You don't have, you, you only apply if you want to go down that path.
I understand, but I just, I don't, you know.
It's against a may.
Going down the path could be.
But it also allows them a voice to, you know, if they do have issues, an avenue to, to voice them.
Well, and not to throw anything more into it, but then you've got all the issues of unions and all that that sort of starts to, contracts.
Could it potentially put someone in a tough spot? Yeah, it could. But that's kind of the whole point of this, is to have tough conversations. Again, I, I think you could leave it in there and put something at the end that say if any of the specified positions above are not filled, the board may fill with an at-large candidate.
So I guess two points. One, I, I think how some of these have gone with some corporations and other places too. There's also typically some element of anonymity for some of the conversations that are having, which I think creates sometimes more of an open dialogue for people to discuss. But I, again, I, I think it's a great idea to kind of keep these as, as, even the Cituit Interfaith Clergy and, and Cituit Black Lives Matter. And if those, I mean, technically, you know, if, if it's not a formal organization or if it becomes the Plymouth County Black Lives Matter, I think having, making sure that we invite those folks. But if, you know, there's some retired minister, that would be fabulous. Who wants to join. I guess I just, I want to make sure that we have the flexibility to, to have the right people or if, how, if there's two competing groups for one of that, I don't even know which one, that we're able to, to get the right people. So I'm with you to.
So just make it a little bit more flexible.
Yeah, I think we have to make it as clear as possible that we want folks from these groups. But if there's, you know, what if, yeah, tomorrow, the Cituit Black Lives Matter becomes, yeah, the Plymouth County one, then like, wait a minute.
Right.
That's all I mean.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
I think in those two particulars, they are obviously going concerns and they both reached out already. So I think acknowledging their interest on, yeah. I think it'll, I think actually in the whole process, it'll all shake out anyway, but.
I guess, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess when we were talking about, well, it could be that people would have anonymity perhaps. But I think the problem is that if this is a board that appointed by this board, it's subject to open meeting laws, right?
Mm-hmm.
So everything will be public record.
I mean, they certainly, the committee can certainly opt to do anonymous survey of everyone and bring in all the feedback. And then these folks evaluate the feedback. And I hear your concern like 100%. And the working world has changed quite drastically in the last 60 days to be extremely inclusive, even when they are tough conversations, like Jim said. And, but I, I see exactly what you've said because that was my, that would have been my thought had I not been living it in my professional world as well. It's, it's really been quite a, a dynamic shift. To be transparent, which is great. It's just gets getting used to, right? Yes.
And again, I, I just wanted to be clear that my comments were really just more of a bureaucratic.
Yeah.
I didn't want to be like hamstrung, oh, no, in case something, I just want to make sure we're going to be as mobile as possible to include as many.
Yeah, so I think if we put may include, put the word may include the following and not make it so concrete and add in a member of Stride and then put that disclaimer at the end that you all said that the board reserves a right to fulfill the spot if the set above does not come forward or whatever. Yeah, whatever you write down.
I think it's important when we kind of, you know, suggest that somebody has to be from a group. If one person from that group applies and we think there's stronger candidates, I don't want to necessarily have to, you know, select something because of that one criteria. Like Andrew said, they could be coming from Black Lives Matter National that we think is a better person than, than our local chapter or whatever. So I like adding the word.
We do may include.
And we'll have that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I could say a similar organization.
Personal, yeah.
Okay.
There you go. Personal. I like that.
To your point, right. Yeah, because that was kind of one of my concerns too, is that while Stride has just developed, you know, well, I would suspect they'll all still be intact in the next 12 months. I don't think.
Well, the intent is to get this formed as quickly as possible.
Well, there may be organizations we're not even aware of.
Exactly.
Right.
That we say, oh, my gosh, how did we forget?
Right. Which the at-large should give us the flexibility as well.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, well, speaking of that, the, I don't think this includes the LGBT. I can't keep going.
That's Stride.
Is that, that's Stride?
I think that's Stride.
I didn't know that was Stride. Okay, thank you. What's, what does Stride stand for?
Cituit.
Cituit.
Oh, I should know this.
I never heard of them. I.
I have to look them up.
So they're the LGBT, the, the all-inclusive, okay.
All-inclusive.
I'll tell you, sorry. Okay, clarified, Ken?
Yeah, as Marissa, they, they quickly, it stands for Cituit Together for Representation, Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity. But it's, yeah, it's broad.
Okay, good.
Thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you, Google. Thank you for doing all this.
So do we want to amend?
Amend.
The changes or approve it with the suggested changes? Or do you want to wait and have me just rewrite it and then resubmit it?
I think we can approve it with the changes.
Um, I would like to, if the board has finished with comments, like to open it up for Q and A. I suspect there might be some people waiting.
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to address the board about the formation of Equity and Justice Committee, please give your name and address. Anyone there?
Three callers on the line, but no one's joined the Q and A session yet.
All right. This is the last call for discussion of Equity and Justice Committee formation. Someone jumped on? All right, if you'd like to comment, please give your name and address first. You can hear me?
I'm going to try pressing the button just in case I disconnect someone I do contact.
Okay. Hi, if you'd like to discuss the Equity and Inclusion Committee, please give your name and address.
Hello. Hi, my name is Stephanie. Hello, can you hear me?
Yep. Please.
Okay, my name's Stephanie and I live at 93 Marion Road.
Stephanie, what's your last name?
I'm just calling, I'm sorry, Stephanie Burke.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Go ahead.
I was just calling and I, and I came in late for this discussion and I heard you talking about the committee members and, and people and the makeup of it and selecting people from groups. I'm curious, I just feel like tuning in and listening, it's really hard and you miss parts of this. And I'm just wondering if this discussion, if they, you're going to be opening this up to have board members like the other committees or it's going to be more free-selected? Because I feel like there's a lot of groups that are forming. I think there's a lot of citizens that would like to be involved. And I'm just wondering how much you're really open to have committee members join that aren't necessarily a part of some of these other groups that have already been established.
I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Vignani to answer so you can hear him.
Sure. So what we've done here is we've tried to have not the majority, but a large portion of the, of the board be at-large members. And then, as we spoke earlier, that it's more of suggestions in terms of the specific areas that we think would, should be good participants. So we think we're trying to, we're trying to do a good job getting a broad-based group of people that can participate in this. And then, of course, it's always an open meeting, so anybody can come and attend and participate.
Okay. I, I just, yeah, we, I just would like to make, see and voice my opinion on that and just feel like it's strong that at-large membership and having it out there for a long period of time is important because I feel like some of the people that have been involved in town for a long time, we've had the opportunity to do something like this for a really long time and it hasn't been exactly done. And of course, with the climate, we're responding to that and I think that's wonderful. I just think this is a great opportunity for people who have maybe necessarily haven't been involved in town because they've never found the motivation to be in other departments where they could really lend their experiences to this. So just to keep that in mind, but thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Great. Good points. Appreciate you calling in. Do you have any other questions? Yep. Is there anyone else queued up for this conversation? All right, doesn't seem anyone is, so we will close the Q and A session.
Q and A session is over.
And is someone comfortable making a motion based on the conversation?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Equity and Justice for All committee charge with the discussed changes.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Connolly. Further discussion? All right, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries five zero. The next step obviously will be to post these openings and begin the process of inviting people to join this committee. Should we be sending letters to those that are, the organizations that are listed?
Or are you going to make the changes?
Yeah, no, I'll make the changes.
Yeah. Lauren, would you mind making sure that Cituit, Black Lives, Cituit Interfaith, and Cituit Stride are contacted to, about the vote?
I can, I can get them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mara can provide those to you and.
Stephanie called earlier and asked if she could distribute it. I think we should, I mean, do you want to do a Facebook post of Adam Mariner? This is what we typically do. A Facebook post of Adam Mariner and a what?
Post on the website?
On the website. And recharge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's appropriate. I'll get it over to you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, unless the board feels differently, I don't think we need to wait until we do our normal boards and committees because this is a special new charge. Okay, everyone okay with that? All right?
But to clarify, we'd use the same procedure, the same form that you fill out if you want to be on Waterways or whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
You apply through the Boards and Committees' application online.
Right.
Okay. Great. Okay. We won't talk about just the logistics, but that's great. Thank you again, Ms. Curran, for taking the lead on that. And the board should give some thought to who would like to participate in this as well because we'll have that coming up. We are now on to new business, which is to discuss and vote the open, to open the warrant for the special town meeting scheduled for November 16th. That is, is required. And how long is it open for again?
Two weeks, next meeting, yeah.
Two weeks?
Till the next meeting, yeah.
Till the next meeting. And the potential articles are our standard special town meeting, unpaid bills and reconciliations. And also will be a number of articles that were on the annual town meeting that were postponed because we wanted to keep that meeting as quick and efficient as possible because of the pandemic. Does anyone have any questions about the warrant? And opening the warrant? Mr. Vignani?
Motion.
I would love a motion. Thank you.
Move the Board of Selectmen open the warrant for fall special town meeting Move the Board of Selectmen open the warrant for Fall Special Town Meeting to be held on Monday, November 16th, 2020.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Connolly. Further comments? Seeing none. All in do, is there anyone waiting?
We have three callers. I don't know if anyone's waiting, but it's, I can go to Q and A if you like.
I'm going to make an executive guess that no one wants talked about opening the warrant, so, um, all in favor? And if I'm wrong, I apologize and we will correct. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion moves five zero. Discuss and vote one-day wine and malt licenses. We have before us a lavishly-done catering at the Maritime Center. Does the board have any questions or comments about this particular application? I will open that to question and answer. I don't.
What's the maximum capacity with?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five right now? Okay.
We should open a Q and A for that, I, I think.
Yeah, it's inside and outside.
Inside and outside?
Yep.
Q and A session has started.
Move, uh, does, if you're on the line to discuss the, uh, one-day wine and malt at the Maritime Center, please give your name and address. No one jumped in. We will close that. Thank you, Nancy. Uh, do I have?
Q and A session is over.
A motion? Anyone?
I might have lost it.
It's on page 136.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day malt, wine and malt license to lavishly-done for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on August 23rd, 2020, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Next item is a discussion about Zoom free conference call for future selectmen meetings. I had asked, and I, and all of you had given input about this too, is when we all went under the governor's declaration into remote meeting, we, I don't think anyone anticipated that we'd be five months in still doing it. And there are many sort of tabled, um, issues that need to be discussed before the board that I personally felt were in need of a better system than what we have now for public engagement. So Michelle and Lorraine and Allison and Jim and our IT team did a lot of homework. And, um, I would like to propose that we do a trial doing Zoom, which we're all way too familiar with, and our next board meeting to see if that helps with conversation and providing engagement. I'll note that the school department meetings are doing the same format. Last night's meeting had over 200 people and it was, it was engaging and, and people could get the information. It wasn't, it wasn't crazy. And the Cohasset, Town of Cohasset Board of Selectmen has been meeting by Zoom for quite a while. And it seems to be an effective tool. Pardon me?
Different product.
Well, they're using a webinar, yes. Different product, but the, the concept is the same. We would all be on little Brady Bunch boxes and anyone presenting would be. And.
What platform is Cohasset using?
Yeah, so Lorraine, why don't you try, Lorraine, stop all the heavy lifting on this.
I've put together a chart of your packet.
Yep.
For different products that we have available currently. There's a little.
Yep.
Yep.
And Zoom Standard Pro is a product that Seth has purchased for the town that we could use. However, the Board of Selectmen cannot meet with selectmen here in room.
Correct.
Only the chair could be here. Everyone else needs to be at home. Whoever's in here needs to have a headset, um, so that everyone can see. We tested it with everybody in here and there's just too much, what do we want to call it?
Feedback.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's too much of a problem. So that's the downfall to that. Free conference call service, we have a video option on it. Everybody can be in the room. It doesn't have that feedback problem.
How, how does the video option work? Like what is that?
We've done it a couple times already.
We have?
Yep. In previous meetings. When we were meeting remotely, Reed Karen.
Oh, yeah, we had that.
Sean on the wheel. That was go-to meeting.
Oh, okay. Was it free conference call?
Free conference call.
That was free conference call. We can't do, um, we can't do go-to meeting professional because the public cannot raise their hand. And I think that you're not, I think you're not fearful to the Q and A session feature with free, free conference call.
It's clunky. And, and so on free conference.
If the system manages it for you, you would be managing it yourself with people raising their hands.
Yep.
So that's the difference. The clunky, you know, question and answer, but if it was video, you would see who was there better.
Okay. So a participant could be on video. How would we see that if we were in the room?
Well, you would see it in the chat box.
Oh.
After everything that we tested, we felt that Zoom Standard Pro that Seth had would be your best option. However, you can't meet together in the same room.
Okay.
And it would be more work for yourself.
Okay. That's all I do all day long, so.
Or somebody else that you assign.
Right.
To take your opinions.
Okay.
Didn't, didn't you try with the, with the lav mic? Would that work?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Like a, like a lav mic? Could that work? Instead, just like a portable, like the portable ones you have on there instead, so it's, you're just getting the audio there or?
We tried three different types.
We did.
You did a lot of it. And even that was the feedback was.
We have the amount of people, especially for the individuals in the room, because you need to be plugged in, listening to what's happening with them. And then you're hearing the other individuals in the room as well. And it is, it's, it's not all seen at the time you can be able to.
And that was for one account or that was for like five, like five at once? So just one video feed and you had five?
We had four at once and a telephone call. The other thing is.
What, can I ask a follow-up to, to Andrew? Oh, God. Did, did you test it as well, like with everybody muted except for the person that was speaking? Did you still get all that feedback with 10 people in the room? Or the board and the, however many of you were?
It was not pretty.
It's a good question. I can't.
So I know, like today I was, I was on Teams and Zoom at the same time because I had to teach somebody how to do Zoom on Teams. So I muted Teams and we went through Zoom and, um, I, I didn't have that feedback, but. I'm just curious. I don't, I don't want you to do more work. I was just curious.
You can be in the room and test it at your next selectman meeting.
Yeah, so that the.
We have to figure out how to get everybody a microphone, Jim.
I don't think we have to be here.
Well, so let's, can we take a step back a second and just say, how does the board feel about? I mean, this was something that I cared about, but I mean, if nobody else thinks that we need to change the way we're doing it?
I just want to give you a couple more.
Yeah, sure.
When we use Zoom, we cannot record on Situate Community Television. Seth does have the capability. But he can do Facebook Live and YouTube FCTV.
Correct.
Which is where we're going to go anyway. So.
And then the Zoom format's recorded and you can put it up later.
Streaming.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I must have seen that last night. I turned on Waterways. Don't ask me why. And there, they had all the little boxes and they had a couple of people who looked like they were there, but they weren't doing the video. So, um.
Well, Zoom can do that. Yeah.
And I did it on, Council on Aging did it this format and I actually linked, I shared the Facebook Live and it, in the engagement, my, my brother in Ohio watched it, so, you know, because it popped up on mine, so.
The other thing is you're limited to 10 host co-hosts. So you're five.
Six.
So you would not be able to.
Six, seven.
Seven would be Michelle or whoever.
Yeah.
You don't need to be a co-host. I don't need to be a co-host. Um, so.
What's the role of a co?
So you have.
They'd be on the screen.
They'd be on the screen. So you would, so there would be other presenters. And I think that's, I'm just letting you know about it.
Right. It's just that when Kevin's presenting, we just make him a co-host.
Say you want to do the.
Yep.
Shell and Shackle.
Yep.
You only have three additional people.
On the thing.
At a time.
At a time.
We could turn them off and then the next one comes on.
Right. No chat feature though, right?
There's an option for a chat.
I think there is.
But that's more money?
We, we found is, uh, especially with school committees, too much.
Yeah.
Everyone just constantly writing things and it's.
That's right. In the first one, they did that and it took an hour just to go through that.
I think he had 12 pages.
Okay.
Complished that's what he.
So I think the, you, you run it just like you would a regular meeting, except that people aren't physically together. So you recognize someone, they have their time to talk and then the next person.
Like Cohasset does all their stuff with chat. Their Q and As.
Right, but they don't, they don't have the webinar, they have the webinar feature. That's a little bit different.
I mean, if you want to see the difference between what Cohasset has or what we do, you can just look at Cohasset Selectman meeting.
Yeah. Yep.
And you can look at the Council on Aging meeting from the other night.
Okay.
Can we just make clear to the public that we're doing this for engagement, not for safety? As we're about to send kids and teachers back to school and we're not going to go remote. No, ju- just for the optics of it as well, to make sure people know that this is to get more people involved in the process and we're not, this isn't for.
Well, that's exactly what I was just going to say, is that I find this very frustrating because I can't hear people. You can't hear people.
Right. I can never hear.
You know, the exchange isn't easy. So I feel more disconnected than I would like to.
So.
Because you're not on video?
Because I can't hear it. I, I.
So you don't like the audio?
I don't like the audio piece. I don't, I don't like the audio-only piece. It's very difficult. It's a lot of management, you know, and it's a lot of delay, um, with giving people access to talk and whatnot. And I, I, they can't hear us and we can't hear them. So they can hear us, you know, we all know, we can tell. They can't hear us well. I'm sorry, let me say that. They can't hear us well.
So are we all, are we all agreed?
We'll be able to address those concerns.
Yeah.
With the product. Are we going to be able to address that and be able to hear and not be clunky?
Oh, yes. It was much better.
Not have and having Karen, plus you're going to have to look at your packet at the same time as you're sitting.
All right. So, so there's two, two obstacles of different, different conversations that have come up.
I just want to make sure everything's on.
Yeah, no, no, it's very, that's why we need to have this conversation. Is, you know, one workaround for that is if we have these for our backup and then, you know, I think all of us are working on our home computers. We're going to be home. We could do both, you know? Or we can have side-by-sides because we could do screens. Does anyone have, feel that that's an obstacle in conducting the meeting? Is if we're at home and I have to have two screens now? You might. But you could use.
So much easier. Two screens is the way to go.
It's, it's much easier to do. Have to talk to my son. Okay, you'll just set me up.
The other, which I think Andrew pointed out that was an interesting, we were talking about this and concept, was at the end of each meeting, we sign to adjourn documents, which is a very important function, is to keep things moving, is we have to sign the documents. So if we move to a remote, like literally remote, um, it will be another obligation of the board to have to come in, preferably the next day to sign documents. Is that a huge impediment to anyone here? Because they can't wait till.
Not right now.
Not right now. Well, I mean, we're, that's the whole point is, I, I would like to propose we try it next week and we spend the next week, the next two weeks, in two weeks, spend the next two weeks letting people know about the change for engagement and then we test it. The meeting, and the end of September will include a conversation with Wind Turbine, which is why I thought it would be better to test it because we're likely to have a lot of people who want to engage in that conversation. All right, anyone?
I think my biggest concern is not being able to be live on TV. But if somebody was here, Seth, how do you do that? How could you?
When we first did the planning board, we, um, because we're doing that, that goes to the free conference and the video, projected video on the wall while one person was still in the room.
Would that work?
Uh, it's not ready, but it works.
But then you could replace it, you could do that live and then replace it with a Zoom recording for the rebroadcasts.
Yes.
Which would be much cleaner, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Well, so what I'm thinking is if, if people know it's on Zoom and if we have the capacity for 300 people, whatever, there's a capacity, that's probably more people than watch us live on TV anyway. So it actually gives them a better way to participate. If they've got a question, they can, you know, get into the conversation. Whereas right now, it's, it's not easy. And they're watching us and I'm not, I don't even know what they're seeing on TV, right? Is it this?
Yep.
Fascinating. But I understand the concern because a lot of our, um, cable viewers are, are senior citizens who may not be as adept to streaming and.
Right. Zooming and.
Zooming and all that. So, but to your point, they're not really engaging, so if they can at least watch a better version the next day, do, still gives them an opportunity to comment, which is probably what they do anyway. You know, the day after, right?
Is there any way of knowing how many people are watching live?
On Comcast.
On, yeah, no, yeah.
No.
Okay.
Hire an online company to, to marketing that the.
Oh, come on, it's thousands. You'd be surprised. Hundreds of thousands. Um, all right, so if there's not an objection, then I think then we should spend the next couple of weeks trying it. And if it's a disaster, then we'll go back to what we've been doing, I would expect.
You mean that's the worst.
We'll, we'll just, like, I want to make sure that we get the word out to people that we're going to change this format so that they're not sitting in front of Channel 9 going, what happened? But otherwise, yeah, we just send out your Zoom invites and away we go. Yeah.
What is, what's the legality of signing, like through DocuSign or something like that?
Good question.
We don't have DocuSign services.
Or like any of those other, like electronic signing? Is that even, I don't even know the legality of it.
Allowed for us, is it?
Is it? I don't even know.
The school department has Calosign. We created an account for them for their IEDs. And just this morning, I just finished an eight-week negotiation with Calosign to cancel our, um, our subscription, which we can hold. They go this far.
I was more just the legality, if you could even do it formally.
A, a lot of stuff that normally you wouldn't necessarily accept, um, we don't have an option right now.
Right, okay. Yeah, I just didn't know what the present situation.
Especially with things with the state, they're more accepting electronic and not, um, which else?
They are, they're not.
They are, because they are all remote.
Yeah.
We know in the state.
Okay, well, if we're agreed, then I think we'll give it a trial next week or in two weeks.
So you're saying we're going with Zoom? Is that the consensus?
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. You got your IT department at home, right?
I won't get my IT.
I'll Zoom you in the next couple of days just to try it.
So only you would be here with Jim? Is that how that works? Okay. And Seth and Lorraine or? Um, yeah, because you will be on where you can, but.
Or you can even just sit at your desk, right?
I don't need to be in the room.
Right, that's right. You're just sitting. Okay.
Can I have my laptop on here?
All right. You good with that, Mr. Pfeiffer? All right.
I don't even know.
Here we go, lurching towards the future. Okay, so we'll try that. Our last little bit of business, our liaison reports. Does anyone have an update they'd like to share? Nobody?
I'll tell you, the Waterways handles, conducts good Zoom meetings, so.
Do they do it by Zoom? Okay.
Yeah, they do. They do, they do a good job.
They do use go-to.
Oh, it was Zoom last week when I was on it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
But it was good. They did a good job.
And I did like, Council on Aging worked out well too. Um, I just want to say that, um, as you know, the library's open. What's interesting, I went to the library trustees meeting. Of the 360 libraries in the Commonwealth, only 20 are open.
Really?
So, I know, I found that amazing. And I want to give them a lot of credit for managing it well. I also wanted to note that the Library Foundation has donated umbrella, uh, back up. The library bought picnic tables through COVID funds so that you can sit outside, access Wi-Fi region materials. The Situate Library Foundation donated umbrellas. The Situate Library Foundation donated umbrellas, Chromebooks, and hotspots that you can borrow from the Library of Things, so that's pretty, pretty awesome. And their focus right now is just supporting the schools and homeschoolers, that, that's their priority. Uh, we talked about the berm, and, um-
A lot of sneezing in here tonight.
Just want to just note that there was, for the Public Building Commission, there was, there's a change to the access to the Codworth Building on the Council on Aging site. There was a request from the Historic Society, I always get them backwards, to go from an asphalt to a stone dust in more keeping with the feel of the building, and I believe that's going forward. Um, and the last thing I will, oh, two things to mention are Charter Review Committee has started, and will be comparing other charters to our town charter, very fascinating, and, I mean again, after the, in September. And I wanted also just to thank the Fire Department, because they helped celebrate Mrs. Callis's birth, 98th birthday with a drive-by this weekend. Her husband was a longtime firefighter in the Town of Situate.
Oh, that's nice.
So, it was very nice. So, those are my reports, do we have correspondence, Madam Clark?
We already covered the correspondence that came in and other items, so we are.
All right. Uh, do I have a motion for approval of minutes?
Yes.
Or would anyone like to-
We will accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on August 4th, 2020.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Kern, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Final motion of the evening?
Return and sign documents?
Moved by Mr. Vignani.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kern, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.